Yeah, that's right.
I think it was.
I think it must have been something else. And I haven't been able to.
How's business?
It's coming.
Come on.
Please live.
How are you?
Project is one zero.
We are.
Um, it's like.
I keep doing it.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
Sorry.
I'm considering.
I'm glad.
That's what we're saying.
I don't know.
I think it's something.
I don't know.
Maybe.
I don't know.
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 Yeah.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
I'm considering.
I'm glad.
Yeah.
I'm glad.
Yeah.
I'm glad.
I'm glad.
I'm glad.
Yeah.
It's a chance.
Look, God.
I just made it.
I don't know.
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 Maybe.
I don't know.
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 Yeah.
All right.
She's just made it started.
Six oh one?
Six oh one?
Come on.
Come on.
I said to the truck, I'm not my mom's.
Sure.
Trying to get a story done.
All right. Let's open up reading up with the prayer. Like we always do. Prayer. Lord, thank you for allowing us to gather here today. We ask that you bless us. We ask that you watch over us. We ask that our decisions do not lower higher than name and prosper our community. Jesus' name I pray. Amen.
All right.
Casey, you got something we want to start with?
Yeah. Uh, uh, some of y'all know our officer, Sergeant Steven Squires, has been in the process of adopting a child.
Well, with his wife.
For a long time. I'll let them tell you all the story and all that about. Right? Rihanna. I'll let them tell you the story about, uh.
The how, 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 how you care if the two fingers there.
And all that. I will say this, and they might not take this one. I think it's kind of cool for them to have this child here. The parents, for whatever reason, put him up adoption. They picked them to, and they picked them to because he's a police officer, veteran police officer, and she's an educated. So they wanted to keep him safe and have a talk and have a picture. So I think there's no better compliment that you would give to somebody. But I'll let them tell you this, man.
Okay. Uh, so this is Elijah, Elijah William, Squires. Um, he is a month and four days. I have to keep up with the days. Um, and so, yeah, we started the process in twenty twenty-three, I believe. And then we went through training, lots of paperwork. Um, and we had our home study completed in twenty twenty-four, went on the waiting list in December of twenty twenty-four, and we received the call, um, April fifteenth at five oh five P. M. And said, we have a baby boy. You're going to get him tomorrow at, um, one thirty. So we were like, okay, we'll be there. Um, he was born April eighth. Um, and, yeah, I mean, that's the gist of it.
Tell me, tell me how y'all were selected. Did y'all send in pictures or they ask for pictures?
So the way that it works is they, they call it a profile book. It's essentially a scrapbook. But we made a profile book of our life, um, describing both sides of the family, um, our hobbies and things like that. Um, and we sent that in. We had to send in, I think, six or eight of them because there's different regions throughout Southern Georgia that they, they go to. Um, and what they do is they take our profile book and send it to let birth mothers or birth fathers, if they're a team working together, um, look through them. And once they look through them, they choose which family they want their baby to go to. And then after that, they have to wait so many days after they've signed, um, to make sure they don't change their mind. And then that's when the adoptive parents will get the phone call. Um, and then that's when you get all the information. We didn't get the information until we got that phone call. Um, and that's when you find out the birth parents, their history of what they tell, um, his history of, you know, the birthing process, um, and all of that. And then that's just where it goes. But, yeah, the birth mother and father, if, again, if he's involved, to make the decision. Um, and then they call us. So we don't hear, we didn't hear anything until that phone call. And they do that so your emotions are not played with, which we respect. But, yeah.
Thank you guys for sharing.
Thank you.
If you'll just contact me. I need that for, uh, for my former students, they claim, because if we're soccer fans.
Thank you.
Nice. What did you say?
Um, whenever it comes time for the first soccer ball to be bought, I, I buy it.
Oh, I see what you're saying. That's what you said you do for your former students.
I do for former students, yeah.
Hey, Frank. Hey, good. All right. Next, let's move on to quoting your packet from Pro Resorations. Mark, what do you have on that?
Well, there's two quotes in here. One is, the first one is for the fire department basement, eighteen thousand nine hundred ninety-four dollars, as you can read in this package. We have some issues downstairs and it is low grade there. We do have some water and some remediation that we need to handle in there. And we brought in a expert in this field to come in. And he looked at it. He gave us a, a worst case scenario. He's thinking that, well, his proposal is based upon, we have to move every single item out of there. Being all the furniture, pictures, everything, the ceiling tiles have to be thrown away. Air handler comes out, everything will come out. He will have to cut in where he thinks there could be water. And, and it's a hide and seek. I feel here, okay, well, I gotta keep going here till I find where it's dry. And his quote here is only to tear out and to fix his, he'll have to put in a drain system into the concrete slab so that any water that does come in there in the future, it can be run out of there. So they will tear out the tile floors only where they're projecting this to be installed. And, um, they will do their, their work. We will have the guarantee from their warranty system from there. And, um, and then Brian and the city will have to pay plus for Brian to go back in there and to make all the repairs, back to the walls, to the framing, the tile, and the drop ceiling. We'll keep the, the, uh, the base of it up. We just got to tear out the, the tiles. And everything will go into two cargo, um, containers, uh, that'll be delivered tomorrow. And he is able to spray everything in those so that if there's anything on that, it will kill anything. And then before he goes back into the building, everything will, he will wipe everything down. So there's no contamination going back into the building. And, um, the, as I said, the containers come tomorrow. So depending on the weather, maybe Thursday, all that stuff will get moved out and stacked into those containers. And then they will start after that. But if y'all approve this one, the second one, it is for eighteen thousand nine hundred forty dollars. That is on the police station basement where it is holding moisture throughout. Even though we've got a large commercial grade, uh, dehumidifier in there, it's hitting around fifty-five to sixty percent, and it needs to be pushed up to about eighty to eighty-five percent in there. So those are poured walls.
Ever, ever got those factors?
It's whole, baby.
It needs to go down to the fifty-five to sixty. Thank you. So it's the lower the number. So those are poured walls in that basement. We took, well, Brian and his guys took everything out. There's nothing in there with that dehumidifier. And, you know, Brian had also built bathrooms in there. So all that's got to get torn out once they start on that. Because you can see where there's been moisture coming underneath where that bathroom is. And you can see standing moisture in the back sides. Now, realize that building was the, was the, uh, the jail back in the day. Nobody seems to know how old that building is and when it had been built. But those are poured walls. I don't know if there have been poured walls back in the day. So he is going to have to treat that with the drainage system also. He will have to seal up the windows, things of that sort, so we're not getting any moisture back into that. And again, there really not going to be anything for Brian to have to put back together because we really don't need that bathroom there anymore since we have the pavilion and the restroom right there. So it's pretty much on that one going to be limited to his, his cost of fixing that remediation right there. But, um, so those are the two facts of where we are with this. And he is looking for me to send him a, a text tonight to tell him whether y'all approve it or not. Because if he approved it, Casey's going to meet me by eight thirty in the morning and give him a key to the basement. He already has a dumpster delivered over there. And so that is, he is ready to start in the morning.
So with this being something that's unbudgeted, have you highlighted or earmarked a place for this to come?
I have. It's just a matter of, I just kind of, you know, again, you know, you're talking about thirty-eight thousand dollars plus the cost of the material to fix back.
Sure.
The basement. He did test everything in the police station upstairs. He did test everything in the fire department upstairs, and there was no, no signs of anything up there. So Dave and Lance have been making that their office in training center probably for the last twelve months. Once we got this notification, we moved Dave and Lance to a classroom up here. And pretty much they didn't bring very little items. And if they did bring it, they had to completely contaminate it before we came into this building. So just trying to get to the end of a situation the city has unfortunately known about. And, uh, so we have to protect our employees and the asset of the city's property. And, uh, so, yes, I have, I didn't bring which accounts, but I will let y'all know where the money will be coming from.
Okay.
But, yes, unfunded item.
Have some of y'all got any questions about this in front of you?
I'm glad we're doing it before it gets upstairs.
Yeah.
I mean, this is something that's got to be contained.
Because if it did get upstairs, we would have had to do something with the fire station.
And police station.
Yeah.
So. Any other questions or ideas general? All right. Let's move on to discussion of engineering services. Mark, what do you have for us?
Well, this here is a discussion that, if y'all remember, y'all had the young lady with the design of possibilities of this building, Jennifer Franklin. And, um, so she did several items and, uh, different possibilities for this next phase down here. And we're to the point now where we need to make some decisions on what's our best option of how to use the space here to use those three classrooms on the right-hand side coming out of here, going toward the post office. And I've met with Rick Cody several times with Rainwater, and Megan and I have met and discussed a lot of different options. And, um, pretty much is, uh, what we're prepared to do is to get a actual design because we will have to. The door that's straight across right there, um, will be where Sarah and Medlin would collect payments at because we would make the front of this building, which is the back right now, the front entrance because of the parking lot, that would come out that way. And so we've got to redesign that. They've got to cut out the concrete of that wall to make a full service teller type desk like we have down in City Hall now. And then we've got to redo the doors to make a whole new entrance there. Sean had said something about a flagpole being, because that was retro back to the school. So in order for that shoe to fall and to do the parking lot, we also need to do this part too along the way. And again, what I'm looking for, and I'll let Brett talk about a few items that are in here, is I am looking to, for the city to look at the possibility of having some debt to pay for the parking lot, pay for these improvements, and then the cash flow from the post office moving up here would service that debt.
Sure. So this is moving to City Hall.
This is moving City Hall down here. This is moving the police to the City Hall there, down to that space. And Casey, correct me if I'm wrong, pretty much it's going to be minimal expense. And the biggest expense for the police department will be in that storage room where we've got to build a, um, evidence, storage correctly. They will need a shower for emergency purposes and a, a bathroom in that area right there. And pretty much everything else, the furniture and everything will stay in there. The G C I C ladies would come into my office, and that's where they would be protected behind the additional locked doors. And if you came in the back entrance, which would be the front entrance, you would come in through those double doors, and the back wall in my office would be cut out, and that's where the glass would go. And that's where anybody who's coming into the police department would be serviced like they are down here. And this entrance, if we come in, everybody comes in now, would be the employee entrance into the police station. So that would be the only thing here. We wouldn't have anything yet in this section of classrooms. But if we do what we're thinking, it will take all the classrooms and everything on this side and the centerpiece right there. So with that, Brett, please feel free to talk about more details of what the nineteen thousand six hundred dollars is going to cover us to get to this point.
Yeah. Well, like Mark said, we've met several times, almost a year now, but, well, and we talked about items that need, things to spawn, the different things. We call that a program. So what, what we're ready to do with this contract is basically build a program for the project. And then by building that project, uh, get some design development to the point where we can get that accurately priced out so that we can give you an overall budget for what it costs to do what you see on the, on the design drawings and choose the way you get the development cost.
Because he'll have to bring in a structural engineer. If we move this wall out here, if we take out this post door, we open up these windows and things of that sort. But do keep in mind, this is not, at this point, redoing the exterior of the entire four sides of this building. Obviously, the exterior of where the post office would be, would be redone. The entrance right here, because that gets into the air conditioning units and the windows and the existing exterior doors. So we're specifically looking, I'm still a scope.
Basically, so that we can come up with an overall project motion that you guys do to do everything.
Very good. Any questions?
That's a lot of money. Where's, where's this money coming from?
Well, I've got thirty thousand dollars left over from our initial million five loan that we had with the bank. And we had reserved that for air conditioning and things of that sort. And so that money is still separate at that point in time. Just so you're aware, there is a hundred and eighty thousand dollars worth of money on this agenda. So this is just the beginning of discussing money.
Yeah. Where's the government funding?
I just told you where that twenty's coming from, out of that third.
Out of the third.
Right.
Not the rest of it.
We're not to the point of having to tell them how this was sponsored.
We can until we get all the pieces of the puzzle. And that's when you may say, we're not doing this. We're not doing the parking lot. We're keeping the post office down there.
But one good thing about these plans is even if we don't, with our, we still have them for the future. And those plans are sacred. Not the budget. I mean, our proposal, but our plans. Any other topics over?
I can say one more thing. If you're looking at the proposal that I've been together, you'll notice that there's a timeframe in there of sixty days from the time that it's executed. I guess I would ask y'all today, what is the real timeframe that you guys would like? Because sixty days since I gave that to Mark becomes somewhat of a question mark. It may be that we'd have to go outside of Jennifer. Um, she, she doesn't have any availability to nurse pay for alcohol. So if it's something that has to happen this summer, probably no problem. I think it'll probably be somebody other than Jennifer.
Okay. You know, and again, until I get, I've got a rough estimate for the parking. And, um, but again, we had to engage them to move to the next stage to understand the water runoff, the grade, and the exact measurements and layouts of that. So we're spending that money in due diligence, just like we have to spend this money in due diligence to get to that so we can put the puzzles together and come back and say, okay, here's our total cost to do X, Y, and Z. And here's how I'm going to pay for it from the cash flow. But if we don't do the post office, we don't need to do this. So what do y'all want to do?
I want to fix our fire department. I cannot see myself voting for any more projects until we bring our fire department up.
I don't know what you mean.
Surely you do.
No, which, which?
A ladder truck, a pumper, a vehicle.
What is the debt service? What is the debt services going to cover that?
That's your job.
You can't make unrealistic.
Well, the thing is, is, is with this, we can at least justify that service with the post office paying their rent to help pay for it in the future.
Because typically a fire truck is paid that's lost. We want to discuss this lost list now, tonight, for y'all to start putting some thought behind this because you buy a fire truck, just like the city did with the engine, with the engine now. You had it in the last loss. We paid ninety-three thousand dollars for five years and this loss is for six years. That is your known debt service. We don't have debt service unless we're taking it straight out of the water department. And that's what we talked about last fall in budget, was about, do you want a fire department or you want a water department? We can't have both at this rate right here. And the new loss, if it is. And here's how I'm going to pay for it from the cash flow. But if we don't do the post office, we don't need to do this. So what do y'all want to do?
I want to fix our fire department. I cannot see myself voting for any more projects until we bring our fire department up.
I don't know what you mean.
Surely you do. A ladder truck, a pumper?
What is the debt service? What is the debt service that's going to cover that?
That's your job.
You can't make unrealistic.
Well, the thing is, is with this, we can at least justify that service with the post office paying their rent to help pay for it in the future.
Because typically, a fire truck is paid that's lost. We want to discuss the S P L O S T list now, tonight, for y'all to start putting some thought behind this because you buy a fire truck, just like the city did with the engine now. You paid in the last S P L O S T. We paid ninety-three thousand dollars for five years and the S P L O S T is for six years. That is your known debt service. We don't have debt service unless we're taking it straight out of the water department. And that's what we talked about last fall in budget, was about, do you want a fire department or you want a water department? We can't have both at this rate right here. And the new S P L O S T, if it is approved, will go into effect April of twenty-seven. But who knows if that's gonna pass until November? And if it doesn't, you got one more shot at it in November of twenty-six. But I couldn't recommend to go buy a million-plus fire truck with no known debt service. Because we don't have it.
Settle some balance.
So we'd have to justify, either to make that work, we'd have to go over water rates or normal taxes.
My point is, if we were... The people come in today and then what were we in the... Dave, what were we in the, our rating?
Ten, if we don't get a status quo, we don't add that rest, we just say eight.
How are we gonna explain this?
We're gonna be out of business then. We're out of business. We're out of business, Jimmy. Because you can't just take and bring on debt without debt service. You have an idea, but it's not realistic.
I'm telling you what's coming.
And we all, we all...
We all know that.
It ain't just us, it's every city out here.
But that's...
But I don't see us doing anything to solve the problem.
All right, where, first question, how are we gonna pay for it?
That's your job, Jimmy.
That's, that's, that's what, that's the problem.
That's why you're uneducated.
Because if we do do that, we have to have the debt service to cover some lines, which we'd have to, we'd have to vote in tax increases or water increases. So we'd have to run some model numbers on how much it could go up, but it would probably go up. I'd bring in another four hundred thousand dollars a year. That's, that would be...
Well, you're paying, you're paying ninety-five thousand a year on a half a million dollars. So if it's a million, you're gonna pay two hundred thousand dollars round number. If it's a million five, you're gonna pay. So I have no source to gather that payment without it being a S P L O S T in twenty-seven item.
Which always has to be.
And again, we get roughly thirty-one thousand dollars a month from the current S P L O S T. If I take thirty-one thousand times five years, it's sixty, sixty, six years, it's sixty. Is, what'd you say?
Seventy.
Yes, thank you. Times seventy-two is two-point-two million dollars. Okay, you got something there, but I've got a known, that's, that, that right there is two million dollars minus a million five for that ladder truck. At least seven-hundred-thirty-two thousand dollars for the city to have any other S P L O S T projects. How are we gonna, you know, what other, what else is on your list?
Right now, the fire department.
That's what I'm saying.
It's like you're talking about spending forty thousand dollars for a pickup truck from the water department.
That makes our bills.
It does.
Like, we had a truck die. I'm having a boy driving his personal truck to work and to the sites right now. Is that fair for him?
I don't know. We got, we got a Tahoe that's got over two-hundred thousand miles on it. Is it fair for this?
What's wrong with it? Is it running? Is it left on the side of the road? This would have to be towed back in.
Well, I, let's continue on, look at all these and then come back to where it is. Because there's, you're right, there is a lot of money on here, but there's lots. We have to look at where the money comes from.
And we keep spending money. We just spent thirty thousand dollars on a shit.
You voted for it.
I did, because it was...
Because why?
There's no other choice.
We didn't have to vote for it.
It would have been three to one, it's still been done, so.
Well, let's move on to discussion of the fire alarm for City Hall. A C G, Mr. Bell? You wanna go through this with us?
Yeah, so currently with the occupied, I don't have my direction guide. This is east, west, right, west. So we're active devices and there are a few more active devices that we have on the current system. So we met with Chief Dave, Dave, and Mark and I, and we walked and identified the rest of the west wing for additions to the current system. These are just additional devices. Seven pool stations, twenty-two smoke detectors, three heat detectors for the kitchen, some strobes, new paving, which based on my supplemental to City of Demarest and that to Chief Dave, and I think there were some other things that happened to be looked at to say whether he was gonna give the approval that it would meet that life safety plan. So as far as I know, with this supplemental, based on what future plans are for this building, this would bring that up to current code. Prior to the move of the police department, those things there. So and that would be another thing that, part of that design down the road or like the Rainwater, if we have to identify, okay, what's being moved, when and where. But as long as that section all the way down to the gym, that would bring all this to the standard that he requested of us. There were some deficiencies. There weren't, there weren't many with us. There were active devices, they weren't active devices. They were devices that were remained, that weren't parts, that weren't activated with the new system. There was bad, some of that wiring, there was some of it that had been cut out of the ceiling and painted together. This, well, we knew that whole west wing online was the active key swing monitored fire alarm system.
Thank you, sir. Dave, you got anything to respond to?
Um, I'm not, the cost, the tariff says, this was two months ago when we voted it. And I had to reprice it. The price went up a hundred fifty-two dollars. A hundred fifty-two dollars, thank the total price for eleven thousand two hundred ninety-nine dollars.
Dave, what you got for us?
So the, the building, the fire code says that the building is occupied. It's either have separation or it has to all be protected. Since you don't have separation, that's a construction, then you separate the building. That's a terrible thing to do. Fire barriers where it becomes, you know this one building? Every line in the two, because you have fire barriers. So that if the building's on fire, it's not affected the outside of the building. So that, that, that's why we, the code was written and code's done, that we have to have a fire alarm system for the whole building. And the concept here is, if you think about this, if people are working or occupying this end of the building and there's a fire right out of the building, can we all buy it? No. So that's why the whole building needs to be controlled and have a protection system.
Thank you, sir. Yep, it makes sense. Alright, let's run through all these when we come back and talk about all the money we're spending on these things. Discussion of the water truck, what you got?
Mark Cordell, who is our servicing mechanic, had his truck. He's probably been driving it for the last six months with a bad transmission and several other issues. The truck is worth a thousand dollars and to fix his truck back was fifteen thousand dollars. And so it didn't make sense to spend something like that, it's kind of like the fire truck on the left. And once you spend a hundred fifty and it's worth twenty-five, fifty thousand when you're done. So Brian, I gave him the right to go look at the cost of the trucks. And what's gonna happen is this truck may or may not be here since it came in with this price of April twenty-fourth. And where this money is coming from will come out of the water extension that then we collected two-hundred-and-thirty-six thousand dollars. And we meet our sales at this point in time because Mark is out there running those water lines also. And Brian actually asked, and I don't know if we can do this, Thomas, since it is a special call meeting that he had asked to have a, I don't know, up to forty-five thousand dollars rather than what's in here, the forty-one thousand three oh one. Because the next truck could not, may or may not be here.
I did not have a discussion, so.
So we're asking, Brian's asking us to approve up to forty-five thousand dollars not to exceed.
Who wants to go on the little trip?
You want it. They don't want it either. No, they'll just have to...
Surplus it?
Yeah. And he's been driving his own vehicle for the last two, three weeks.
Next one is the M P E service invoices.
This goes back to a phone call that we had back the first of March when we had two pump stations, one at Demarest Elementary's lift station and the other one at the South Haversham Middle School lift station. And both of these lift stations are approximately twenty-five years old and they had the original pumps still in those. And the life expectancy is not to expect it to last twenty-five years, but it did. And I had told y'all that we needed to do an emergency approval of this at the time. And when I got the invoices from M P E, we would present those. So, um, so we were able to, you got two, two expenses here. The one in Demarest is twenty-eight thousand two hundred and twenty and the lift station at South Half is forty-one thousand five seventy-six. They have been repaired and we have been invoiced by them, obviously, by this. But we didn't get these invoices till late April, so I don't want y'all to think we've been holding these since March twenty-sixth, as it says. So they were told they had to wait until this meeting for approval. And this will come out of, out of capital improvements on these two because it's, it's not a budgeted item. But going forward, we noted that we are going to have to purchase some of these, these pumps to have them in inventory. Because again, you know, it is what it is and it's not something we have typically tried to do, was have inventory of extra supplies. But it's something that we need to do.
Thank you. Next one, discussion of blight ordinance. Dave, do you want to speak on this one? This is our second reading.
He just walked out.
Thomas, do you want to speak on this?
Blight ordinance is something that is a, law ordinance provided by G M A. We provide it, local city of Demarest. The way that it works is that if property is determined to be blighted, it's going to have the definition in there and declared to be so, the tax assessor notified, effectively the tax, the actual amount of the tax, property taxes they pay go up by a factor of seven. If the property owner fixes a property and makes it so that it can be removed from that designation, then they get a tax break. So what it does is it helps, you all were on...
You all had indicated at the retreat that code enforcement was a priority. This will help in some ways to fray the costs associated with code enforcement and it also incentivizes the property owners to bring their properties into compliance. There are some smaller jurisdictions around the northern Georgia area that are actually funding code enforcement through the revenues, the tax revenues that are generated by this blight tax and, and they are, the properties are coming off these lists and becoming productive properties again, so.
So let's run through a scenario on this, Thomas. If the code enforcement comes by and finds my house blighted and they file, how, how does that work? Do I immediately start paying that or I say, there's a time period?
No. So... It's the, you still go through the, the mechanism for enforcement like nuisance or code enforcement and if they don't bring it into compliance, then you, that, the tax, the tax assessor's given that notice and so the next tax year is when that assessment would begin.
So it looks like it'll take quite a while and plenty of notices.
Yeah, it's not...
Going to court and a notice of a hearing and then two-hundred-and-seventy days after the hearing before it's turned over. So there's plenty of notice.
Once a notice is actually given that you're headed down this route, it's, it'll be two years before the tax, the actual tax increase impact is felt by that property owner.
This is our second one, seeing this. Did y'all go through it? Have any changes you'd like to make, modifications? I know some have been made. Any other discussion about it? Mark, do you have anything to say about it?
It's just another tool to work upon this.
Very good.
We do have our first code enforcement coming to court tomorrow. Wednesday. Thank you. Do what?
The next one on the list is discussion of a grant affidavit, but it's not understanding y'all think that's pending, so we just remove it.
Right, it's just paving, but it's...
Just remove it. But let's go back and talk about the money while we have a minute or two. So looking over different things, number seven, the two invoices that we have here, those are have-tos. We have to notch on those. The pickup truck is probably on the have-to list. I'm replacing that with that one. The discussion of the estimates over the water remediation, those are necessary. And on that list, contract on the plan on moving this forward is a, is a want-to since we're looking at moving, moving the post office up here and everything to try to help covering that debt service of our parking lot and everything else. And also the A C G. On the fire service, since we're looking at remodeling, are we gonna have to modify that fire?
They'll be taking that into consideration, but that is, that's why I thought we would have that we're under construction, we're under rehab at the present time. So that's a question for Chief to answer because we could be throwing some bad money and have to tear it out. But in the meantime, we need to reach that state or if we're going to do that. But I, I still say that we're under, I would recommend that we're under construction plans.
Alright, let's talk about, let's talk about the remediation. Does anybody have anything that you think that we shouldn't remediate that area?
I'm sorry, what's saying?
The remediation, you have the two first estimates on there, one for the fire department, the second one police department. Let's do eighteen thousand dollars, so I'll get that water out. I don't feel, I don't feel like we did, we kicked that can down the road, but it's gonna cause more damage, something else. We have the design quote for the nineteen thousand six hundred. This is just pushing us a little bit further, closer to being able to move the post office up here and help with that debt service. I think that we need some sort of plan to move that forward. Council, y'all have anything y'all want to talk about on that one?
I think we should leave the post office where it is, sign a contract with them and then use that income to pay the debt for the fire.
I think we should move the, the post office up here, just like we're planning. Get that debt service moving for the reconstruction of this building as we plan for years and years, but we keep kicking it down the road.
Like the fire department.
One thing, Jimmy, just so you know, I won't be a crowd number assessment. I want to say they're paying twenty-one hundred dollars down there a month, so twenty-one times twelve.
Well, you were gonna increase that, right?
We increased it to twenty-one. Twenty-one for like a thousand dollars, so that's been increased. There's nothing really, you might even get three percent or something. That's twenty-five thousand dollars. And you need roughly a hundred and ninety thousand dollars for debt service of that million five truck. I'm a little short from that debt service. But the debt service up here is forty-five thousand dollars, is forty-five hundred dollars a month, or fifty thousand four hundred on this to cover the debt service for these items. Because we wouldn't make these items part S P L O S T. That wouldn't be, that wouldn't be an approved... That wouldn't be a, that wouldn't be an approved approval of that. Now, if we were buying the building, you could, but just making these changes, I don't think that would be a viable option on that. But the fire truck definitely is when that comes back around.
If it comes back around.
Well, that's why we'll go ahead and make a list. And, um, because we'll have to be meeting with the county and the other cities, the city hall, they'll split the monies and those kind of things.
Sure.
So my question is, if it's coming, we're gonna be inspect, inspected, and we're gonna end up with a ten rating, unless we take steps to, to reduce that.
And there's several things that we're working on to try to help with that.
What, what things?
Just discussions with P M R, discussions with other counties and things like that, seeing what other things are out there, so. I don't think anybody's sitting on their hands.
And the other part of that, Jimmy, is what you're saying also, is if you remember, Dave had a number of like seven hundred fifty thousand dollars to get a have the four firefighters in there. I might be off on my number, but that's another expense.
It is, and it's coming, that's what I'm saying.
But Jimmy, you're not telling us anything we don't know.
Yeah.
What I, I'm saying is we need to get off of our.
But where do you want the money to come from? I don't have the sources for the repayment of that. I don't have it. You don't have it.
You, you spent a quarter of a million dollars on the water department the last year. Where did that come from?
Out of their own money that they generated. That's right, they reinvested.
Some of this may have to come out of them.
It has been coming out, and that's what we said, Dave presented a budget the first time.
Alright.
To me of two point one billion for one fire station.
That's right.
And we average three calls a day. Three calls.
Well, what was it, is the budget ended up?
You don't remember? You don't remember? Seven hundred ninety-two thousand.
Seven hundred ninety-two.
That was a hundred eighty thousand dollar increase from the year before.
What I'm telling you, gentlemen, is this has been kicked down the road for twenty years.
Well, what's our, what's our tax revenue right now? So totally, we generate four hundred seventy-five thousand dollars. Right now, the fire department budget's over our tax revenue, so meaning that it's funded by the water department. And by going up on it even more, we're gonna, to, to raise it that much, we'd have to go up on the taxes in the next two years at a drastic, drastic rate.
It's coming.
So when our budget time starts coming around, that needs to be a topic on your mind, whether or not you're prepared to make that move to jump that much.
I don't think we gonna have a choice. I'm not, I don't wanna tell these residents your fire insurance is going, is fixing to triple.
But you'll tell them that their taxes are gonna triple.
Whatever it takes, it's coming, I'm.
Jimmy, I, I think we can give you some projections, and I think you might wanna start a campaign with folks out there. Do you want this type of fire service? Do you want this? Do you want to pay this much? And start educating the folks, and that can be something that, you know, we can hold some, some meetings in here. You can have some folks come in here and tell y'all what they think.
That's what I'm saying, we need to start moving folk instead of kicking it down the road.
That's fair enough. I think that we can start, you know, as we start entering the budget phase, to start having some public forums on what their taxes look like to, to, to gain the fire department that reaches the I S O rates that we have right now.
Can I have a question?
Yes.
Oh, no, and I'm not the fire department, I think it's gonna break down, but are we still in the consolidation, consolidation of campaigns?
Those are just meetings and.
I mean, are, are you thinking about it?
We're gathering that. Yeah, I don't think nobody's thinking about it.
We've had one meeting. Because we don't have a, with the consultant. I said all along.
Reason I said that is if we did consolidate with the county, then the taxpayer doesn't, uh, spend over a million dollars that we don't have a use for, I mean, we just lost a million dollars.
On that asset, yes.
And I, I was looking at it as the taxpayer, uh, and I think losing a million dollars just, uh, we consolidate with the county, and we have a million dollar fire truck set down there.
Well, let me tell you what we have done. Let me tell you what we've done the last couple of months. I've asked Dave to give me a asset of every city asset owned by the fire department. Trucks, turnout gear, equipment, everything. And my envision is, in this, is the city taxpayers of Demerus have an asset here. Okay, what I envision is, we're going to get a credit for these assets from the county. So it's not just giving all that to them.
And that's a big if, even if we continue to have that conversation.
But Frankie, my whole point, when we have several weeks of this, is to gather the facts and keep emotions out of it while we go down this to see what is the best option.
Yeah.
Because I know it's easy for everybody to say, well, we don't wanna, we don't wanna do this, we don't wanna do that, but we're saying it off of other items and not end of the day facts.
As a taxpayer, what I'm looking at though.
Say that, what's the first one?
As a taxpayer, what I'm looking at, if, if they, uh, if we did side go with the county, then what can we do to make it all nice and perfect?
And that's what we were saying about the credit.
We'll give, we would give that credit back. How it comes, uh, does it come back as a form on their tax bill? Credit? Is it a check written to Demerus and Demerus does something like that? I'm not an attorney, can answer that, but we're throwing all of that on the table. So I've got this list of Dave.
I mean, if fire department makes something, I'm, I'm not against it, I, I just, you know, I just look at the taxpayer.
No, it's a fair question, fair question, Frankie. Thank you.
Absolutely. So, but great, we'll have some forums and see what, what people think, so thanks for bringing that up. Um, and, and the next is, is whether or not we talk about table and A C Gs, since we're talking about remodeling and move forward with that after we get a little bit further along in the construction process, so we know where those laws are going to go.
And I'm okay with that.
We've laid all these things out on top, council, do y'all have anything else y'all want to talk about before we move forward?
You mentioned the parking lot. You said you've gotten some information about it for them?
No, that, but that we've approved them, the survey has been done, and the markings of all as-built out, out there. And so it's now to the next stage of James Irving.
Sure, okay.
With his part of designing and doing the water models, et cetera, like that.
Okay.
So it'll be a couple of weeks.
Yeah, that's right.
But again, if you wanna stop one, you might as well stop two. We might as well cancel that contract too, if you don't think y'all, because you can't bring the post office up here without that parking lot.
But again, we have plans, plans are ours either way. Um, I have a question about the, not putting the, uh, fire alarms up, you know, immediately or whatever. Are we covered because we're in con, uh, construction mode or?
You don't have coverage down there.
Right, no, I mean, are we, like, if something happened?
Covered with what?
Like guns.
I would say if we don't have fire alarms, that could be an issue, but I'm not an insurance agent, that's a question I can ask.
Right.
But.
I just wanted to know if that was a Bible, you know, is that like a standard thing, oh, y'all are under construction, or y'all are planning, so you don't have to have that?
Is that illegal sex? No, I hear what you're saying, it's a fair question, because we are still under that. Do we have a project going right now with our slinging hammers? No. But are we in planning stages with architects and commercial contractors? Yes.
If you're using it for a public purpose, it's gonna have, you gotta take into consideration.
But we are covered up to this point.
We're covered up to here.
Right.
We're not sprinkled, but we've got, we've got the smoke alarms and fire alarms, they're all through City Hall, down through the ceilings, coming from this east side to here, because this is as far as we go with using anything.
Are we using this in the building for heating it all?
Storage.
Storage.
And again, it's four solid concrete walls.
Yeah.
And then cabinetry and the drop ceiling.
Yeah.
So there's no work being done by anybody's.
Right.
You know, using a torch for anything or anything like that.
That makes sense. And Jim, that's a matter, except for building.
Yeah.
Alright, since we have a few minutes, um, I think we have a topic to go into executive session for, right? We do.
Correct.
Um, we need a motion to go in the executive session for a few minutes.
I'll make that motion.
Thank you. We have a second. All those in favor? Thomas, what is that, discussing a litigation?
You guys, if we'll move ours.